Good evening. I'd like to call the January 5th, 2015 meeting of the Hampden Town Council to order. The first order of business this evening is to swear in the councilors for districts one, two, and three, and four. If the district councilors would please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
I state your name.
I do affirm.
Do affirm.
You do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
That I will, in all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties incumbent upon me.
Duties incumbent upon me.
As town counselor, state your district.
As town counselor, district.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, and congratulations. If you would sign your oaths, and then pass them down to me, please.
And the next order of business is the town attorney will preside over the election of mayor.
So I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor.
I'd like to nominate David Ryder for mayor.
Second. Are there any other nominations to be heard? Okay, all in favor of David Ryder as a mayor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Congratulations. So now, at this time, we'll make the nominations for the deputy mayor.
Excuse me, I need to swear you in as mayor.
Oh.
I, David Ryder.
I, David Ryder.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor.
As mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, if you could sign that one for me.
Okay, so I guess now we can have nominees for deputy mayor.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Councilor Saroyes for mayor, for deputy mayor.
Okay, do I have a second?
Have a second there.
Any other nominees?
I'd like to nominate Councilor Shakespeare for deputy mayor.
A second.
Any others? Okay, so we, first, we'll vote on Councilor Saroyes. All in favor for Councilor Saroyes as deputy mayor, raise your hand. Two. All in favor for Councilor Shakespeare for deputy mayor, raise your hand. Councilor Shakespeare wins. Now he's got to get sworn in, right?
Yeah.
Have to do another swear again?
I, William Shakespeare.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen hereof.
Continue a citizen hereof.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
Of the town of Hampden, Maine.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities, excuse me, all the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy mayor.
As deputy mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sorry about that, that was my.
It's all right.
That's my dentist's justice. Need a pen? Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time then, I'll walk you to the Hampden Town Council meeting, January 5th, 2015. If you would, please stand. We have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. He should be the republic which stands on the nation under God, in his little liberty, and justice for all.
Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? No questions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor? The next item is public comments. This time, anybody in the public has anything that they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your chance to speak. Go ahead, sir, I think.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, first of all, congratulations to the new members, to new mayor, a new deputy mayor. It's wonderful we actually made it out here tonight and didn't freeze ourselves, but I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to working over the next couple of years with all of you. And if I can do anything to help, call me, I understand. We may have some very interesting legislation, proposed legislation from the governor that may affect the town greatly, so I'll keep an eye on it and let you know.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Jeremy W. Jones, Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. Well, it's a little brisk to be finishing up shovel and snow, so this is, this night is actually very important. Let me first congratulate our new mayor and members of the council on achieving your positions. We, the people, encourage you all to work together, to do what is right for the business of the town, to leave irrational emotions behind and rise to a higher, clearer logic. And to that end, I offer these guidelines for your governance, guidelines that both the state and federal government should also adhere to as well. Let us, at the local level, be the best example for them. Each of these could be presented at length and in greater detail, but I'll be brief. Ten core guidelines for our town. First and foremost, abide by the United States Constitution in its entirety. Eliminate excessive taxes. Three, eliminate our town's debt. Four, eliminate any deficit spending. Five, promote free market business. Six, promote civic responsibility. Seven, reduce the overall size of our bureaucracy. Eight, believe in the people. Nine, avoid the pitfalls of politics and ulterior agendas. And ten, maintain local independence, be more self-sufficient. Remember, the whole town is watching. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, public comments closed. Moving on to public policy agenda. Public errands, we have none. Nominations, appointments, and elections. Water District trustee appointment. I served on the infrastructure committee, so I guess I'll field this at the last infrastructure committee meeting. We interviewed three candidates for the water district. They were all very qualified individuals. We had a pretty good discussion with each one of those, and it was the general consensus from everybody in infrastructure that we recommended Lauren Swalick to the Board of Trustees for the water district. So with that, that is the recommendation from infrastructure, sent to the council. What would you, we need public comment first. Seeing none. What is the voice for the council?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Lauren Swalick to the Board of Trustees of the water district.
A second.
All in favor? Very good. Item three, unfinished business. Update on Prentice and Carlisle project. That was also discussed in the infrastructure committee. Back in 2008, the town met with Prentice and Carlisle and discussed a cut plan for the town of Hampden with their property, and they talked about what they would like to do for Dorothy Dick's Park, for parks and trails. So that was on hold for several years, but in last year, it was brought up by the council that we should look into for cutting the wood on the business park before that got destroyed. So we got a hall of Prentice and Carlisle, met with them, sat down, they looked over the plan that they had before and allowed it would work. Now, they have come up with a contract for the town that we have entered into, they're going to cut the business park this year. The L.L. Bean property may be next year. This summer, they're going to do the cut in Dorothy Dick's Park and establish those walking trails that we feel the townspeople have wanted. All that is available online, that contract, if anybody would like to look at that. The next item is new business, and I'll have the town manager explain that.
Annually, the town council meets, generally on a Saturday, to discuss goals and objectives for the coming year, and it's also the time when the council sets general budget parameters, goals that they want me to present to them as part of the budget. And I have offered two day, I'd like to get this going as quickly as possible. It, I'd say this every year, but it will be a difficult budget, the state revenues are not getting larger, and so there will be more pressure at the local level for how we fund and what we do. And so the earlier that myself and the department heads can start working on a budget, the better. And in order to do that effectively, I, we, need guidance from this council on what they want to see in a budget to move forward. So I proposed either January 31st, or I believe February 7th. Either of those dates, what is, it's really difficult to get seven people together in one place, but it, the meetings generally are eight to one or two. We work through, there's a lot of brainstorming. But what comes out of it is some general guidelines for what the council wants to see in the budget. So if, is there one of those two dates that's best for most people, or hopefully everybody? But we'll start with the 31st. Who's available on the 31st? Who's available on the 7th?
Actually, we have 31st in conference.
The 7th is okay? Will the 7th work for, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we could schedule that, what I would ask the council to do is bring to that meeting a list of the things that you are, would like to see explored, discussed, more information about, possibly changed. That's the meeting where these items get put up and kicked around, and what comes out of that is a consensus, because obviously I can't prepare seven budgets. And so there are, the consensus of the group is what gets prepared. So we do that on the 7th. I'll post that that's a public meeting, but it's for the purpose of the council discussing amongst itself with me what its expectations are for the coming year. That's kind of a core, start the thing off, so.
Excuse me, Sue, would that meeting be here?
That's here, in this room?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it'll be February 7th, 8:00. I provide pastries, coffee, that kind of stuff, so there's something to.
Homemade?
Homemade? Homemade, absolutely. I do cook for that date. Anything else on that? Any questions about what it is, or before that, Alex, yes, Alex?
Would it help, can, as a citizen, can supply some thoughts before?
Absolutely. You, you have myself plus seven elected officials sitting here, you can pass them along to.
In its public.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of brainstorming. Things end up on white sheets, pasted all over the room, and then people go around and highlight the items that are the most critical to them for what they want to see done, and any.
I said it on one of your guests.
Yep. That's it. And prior to this one, the annual report I did for December identified what was discussed last year and what was done on each of those items, so that's a reference point, but it can be as specific as you want it to be, and what, that allows me, if you have information that, or things that you want to see changed, or perhaps changed, or you want more information about, gives me a chance to know what all those things are, so that I can give the information that you need to do that. Any other questions, comments? I will be sending out, I'll be posting this as an agenda, as a special council meeting, because that's the only way I have to do this, and it will be February 7th, 8:00 here. Thank you. And the second, I, I want to move on. The next one is the date for the second council meeting in January. The third Monday in January is a holiday. Generally speaking, the meeting, if Monday's a holiday, is held on Tuesday night. That's also, I believe, school vacation week. I don't know what everyone's availability is during that week. We just have to make sure that if it's held on that Tuesday, that there is a quorum.
No, I think, I don't, I think school vacation is a pandemic.
Oh, that's right.
It's just Monday.
You're right. I was thinking that, I'm a month ahead of myself, but it is, Monday's a holiday, so is, are people available on Tuesday, the 20th?
Yes, I can.
Everyone available? Now that I figured out which month we're in?
Okay.
Okay, so that one will be on the 20th. And the only other thing I want to mention is councils have turned in their preferences for committee requests. The mayor will have those and be making committee assignments, which I would assume you're going to do some sort of notification before the next meeting, or do you want it on the agenda for the next meeting? There can't be a finance committee meeting until we get one.
No, I'll notify him before.
Okay. As long, because services would normally meet next Monday night, and planning and development Wednesday, but that is, I'm not sure where that stands. Our normal schedule, services the second Monday, infrastructure the fourth Monday, that, that one would be fine, but if you notify the councilors and let Denise and I know.
I'm assuming I should know by the end of the week.
Okay. Okay, so we will, we won't have a planning and development committee meeting this Wednesday?
Probably not.
Right, okay, so the next council committee meeting would be services next Monday? Is that something that could be posted? Okay.
We have anything important coming up on planning and development that we should meet Wednesday evening?
Well, there's important things going on, but I don't think there's anything time-sensitive right this second, other than the review of ordinances.
Right, I think we're just working on private ways and review of ordinances.
Okay, we're okay then.
Unless Dean's come up with something that I haven't heard about. Denise?
I spoke with the code enforcement officer before the Christmas break, and I know he's working on with the town attorney, the life safety code, the building code, and one other. And he had indicated he was going to bring that information to the 1-7 planning and development meeting, but if we're just going to move it ahead a couple of weeks, is that all right?
It would be the 21st.
Okay.
I think we'd be pushing it pretty tight to get everybody scheduled who's going to be on that committee and notified and everything by Wednesday.
I'll, I'll let him know tomorrow.
We don't have enough time legally to.
The other thing I gave you at your seats tonight was just a brief list of current items on committee agendas, just so we don't lose these as we transition from one group of counselors on committees to another. These were the things that were being currently in process in these committees at the time that the year turned over.
Okay, next item is committee reports. Finance, I don't think you had it. Planning and development, Councilor Saroyes, did we have anything?
We canceled the last meeting because of holidays and attendance.
We canceled the last meeting because of holidays and attendance. Okay. So the services was led by Councilor Lawless, and she's not here because she's no longer on the council, but infrastructure, I was in charge of infrastructure, and as I discussed, some of the stuff we had talked about was the wood harvesting with Prentice and Carlisle. One of the other topics was the GPSs for the vehicles at the town garage. The ITS person for the town had put one on a vehicle and was experimenting to make sure that, before they put them all on, that it was going to be able to monitor it all through, out everywhere in town, so we wouldn't get any false readings. So that worked out really well, there wasn't any problems with it, so they're in the process now of putting all the GPSs on the rest of the vehicles at the highway garage. The other thing that was brought to the committee was a group that were looking for fields for kids, soccer fields, it's a nonprofit. They came and discussed what their goals are, and they're looking for some land to create some fields for recreation for kids. And that was about everything for infrastructure. Next is managers' report.
2015 transfer station decals are on sale at the town office. This year's price is $10 per sticker, and please bring a copy of the registration from the vehicle on which you wish to place the sticker at the time you purchase it. Vehicles without 2015 stickers will not be allowed access to the transfer station after January 31st. This is a policy set a number of years ago, and please get your sticker, as opposed to being turned away at the gate.
I got a quick note.
Yeah.
Are we still taking wood, or did that end in December?
I had asked Public Works to do that through the end of December. If we get a lot more, my backyard today looks like it did right after the first storm, because the wind has been so bad that, so we may get more requests for that, I'll keep you posted. 2015 dog licenses are available at the town office, and a $25 late fee will be applied to any license issued after, it's January 31st, 2015, not December. Don't get excited. 13115, so please get your dog license. Bids for finishing concrete floors in the public safety section of the municipal building were opened on December 30th, and the results of the bids will be discussed at the finance committee meeting prior to the second council meeting in January. Those bids were authorized to be put out by the infrastructure committee. Librarian Debbie Lozito has applied for a grant to replace the lighting at the library with all LED fixtures. This grant application is consistent with the plan of the infrastructure committee to look at light replacements in all town buildings as a cost-saving measure. Hampden Public Safety held their annual training and awards on Saturday, January 3rd. Many people were recognized for jobs well done. Lieutenant Lundstrom was named employee of the year, and it's not the first time he's been the recipient of that award, so clearly he continues to strive for excellence. Lieutenant Lundstrom, Sergeant Bailey, Officer Rice, firefighter Paramedic Rup, and firefighter paramedic Labarnes were also presented with certificates of appreciation for going above and beyond the call of duty after a motor vehicle crash. A huge amount of food was thrown from the vehicle during the crash. They collected the packaged food, cleaned it, and transported it to a storage location. Their actions preserved the food and ensured that it would reach the food bank that it was originally destined for. The town will foreclose on February 23rd, 2015, on unpaid 2012-13 real estate taxes. Notices of impending foreclosure were mailed to owners today. I am pleased, however, to note that the number of notices sent this year is lower than last year, and that we have not had occasion to actually take possession of any properties for sale as a result of real estate foreclosure in many years. Pretty sure we won't again this year.
Can I ask a question about?
Yes.
Transfer station, is, is there a real issue with the fact, and I've been there a number of times, leaving the area for brush open to the public? Do we feel we're going to get more? I mean, right now, a lot of people want to probably dispose of their Christmas trees during the week or some, I just kind of question whether, what harm does it do just to leave that area open so they can dispose of brush people during the week?
I'll talk to our interim public works director about. I'll talk to our interim public works director about what that has done in terms of the impact on, certainly, we don't pay for disposal, we do, however, pay for transportation, and that has been a large expense during this time period, so I'll talk to Greg. If it appears that we still have a lot of interest in this right now, perhaps we'll extend it another couple of weeks, but certainly not throughout the entire winter.
No, yeah, no, I just think it would be goodwill, considering the storms that we seem to be getting, a lot of, lot of.
Lot of wind, absolutely.
Lot of damage on branches and whatnot.
The January luncheon meeting of the Hamden Business Association will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, January 6th, at 12 noon at Angler Seafood Restaurant. The guest speaker will be Rebecca Young, multimedia marketing executive with Town Square Media in Brewer. She will speak on the topic of advertising 101. And finally, the 2015 Annual Chamber of Commerce Dinner is being held on Wednesday, January 21st, 2015, starting at 5:00 PM at the Cross Insurance Center. I am pleased to note that Counselor Dennis Marble will be receiving the Arthur Comstock Professional Services Award at that dinner. If any counselors wish to attend, please let me know so that I can make reservations, which has to be done by January 9th. It's also notable that RH Foster, a Hamden-based company, is receiving the Business of the Year Award. So we have two Hamden notables receiving awards. And finally, that it's not in the report, but the new schedule for the town planner took effect today, the planner's hours are 7:30 to 3:00 PM, that is now a part-time position.
Thank you. Next, we have council comments. We'll start down with Counselor Saroyes.
No comments.
Counselor Wild? No comments. Counselor Shakespeare?
Absolutely, I'd like to, as usual, beginning every year, say congratulations to the new counselors that were elected, and pleased you're on board, and I'm sure we can all work together and accomplish all the goals and objectives that we sit down in detail. And I want to thank the council for nominating me as Deputy Mayor, so thank you very much.
Counselor Dupree?
I would just like to say I look forward to working with everybody this year and getting a lot accomplished in a very civil manner.
Counselor Marble?
I'll echo those comments, I think we're all looking forward to that. I also want to remind residents of District 2 that I will be holding an open meeting on the 3rd Saturday of this month, I believe it's the 17th, at 9 o'clock at the town library.
Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody in the 3rd District that supported me. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be here, and for those in the district who didn't vote for me, I'm still going to try to reduce your tax burden this year, so thank you very much. And please, shop local, buy American. Good night, Hamden.
And I guess the only comment I have, I just thank the counselors for having confidence enough to vote me in as mayor, and I strive to do the best I can for the town and for everybody here on the sport. Thank you. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? So be it. Done.